Good allegiance. Matt, you want to lease lung?
Good allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, we have approval of minutes of the June 21st, 2022 meeting. Anyone who perused those, they have any questions, comments, corrections, let us know. Otherwise, we'll move on to a motion.
Kukowski make a motion, approve the minutes of June 21st, 2022.
Clark will second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
All right, first of two public hearings we have tonight. Item number four is a rezone request, considering a request submitted by Phil Perpero, C W Perpero, Inc., to rezone the property at 1190 West Rossin Avenue from B3 Office and Professional Business and M1 Manufacturing to M1 Manufacturing. Catherine, please.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Phil Perpero, C W Perpero, Inc., to rezone the property at 1190 West Rossin Avenue from B3 Office and Professional Business and M1 Manufacturing to M1 Manufacturing. Applicant is Phil Perpero, C W Perpero, Inc. Property owner is Skyway Investments LLC, W I L L C. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is June 22nd, 2022.
Doug?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I am the Director of Community Development for the Steveaw Creek, and this is the first of two public hearings this evening, this one being for rezoning of the property at 1190 West Rossin Avenue. So, the two public hearings are actually related, they're adjacent properties, and as we kind of go through the narrative here, you can see that these two zonings are very complementary each other in the sense that it's taking a property that's got a split zoning right now, and based on the results of a CSM that was recently recorded, makes those zoning lines now congruent with the residual parcels or with the new parcels. This first property, 1190 West Rossin Avenue, someone maybe called it, had a good historical memory, that was Skyway Airlines used to have their offices there, that's an office building that is partially zoned M1 and partially zoned B3, so partial manufacturing and partially office and professional business, which would be B3. The proposal is to rezone that to M1, and the reason behind that is that in a reconfiguration of those parcels, the property to the west of the building, which included some parking and open space, would be zoned M1 such that it may be utilized in the future for additional manufacturing activities possibly with one of the adjacent parcels. As we'll find out in the second public hearing, there's also a request to rezone the entirety of that front parcel to B3 Office and Professional Business. So, the two do go together. This proposed rezoning was reviewed by the Plan Commission in the meeting of May 24th, 2022, and they did recommend approval of that with the condition that the CSM is recorded prior to the submission of any permanent applications or building on those properties. So, with that, this is a public hearing. If anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to rezone property at 1190 West Rossin Avenue from its current zoning of B3 Office and Professional Business and M1 Manufacturing to M1 Manufacturing, please approach the podium, give your name, address, and proceed to address your questions and/or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. We'll make three calls for public commentary. Call number one. Comments, call number two. Kevin, anybody online for this? All right, call number three for public commentary. Great, thank you. Any comments, questions, concerns from the council? Steve, anything from the first?
Oh, nothing.
Okay, then, we will move on to item number five, then, consideration of an ordinance 3047 approving the rezone of property at the property of 1190 West Rossin Avenue from B3 Office and Professional Business and M1 Manufacturing, M1 Manufacturing. Motion when someone sees fit.
Kirkowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3047 approving a rezone of the property at 1190 West Rossin Avenue from B3 Office and Professional Business to M1 Manufacturing or and M1 Manufacturing to M1 Manufacturing.
Clark seconds.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item number six in the second of our public hearings is to consider a request submitted by Phil Perpero, C W Perpero, Inc., to rezone the property at 7030 South 13th Street from B2 Community Business and B3 Office and Professional Business to B3 Office and Professional Business. Doug, as you stated. Oh, sorry, Catherine.
Public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Phil Perpero, C W Perpero, Inc., to rezone the property at 7030 South 13th Street from B2 Community Business and B3 Office and Professional Business to B3 Office and Professional Business. Applicant is Phil Perpero, C W Perpero, Inc., property owner, Skyway Investments LLC, W I L L C. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is June 22nd, 2022.
All right, thank you. We did speak to this, the second portion of this rezoning as part of the initial public hearing, but it takes this parcel, which is highlighted in red on your map and on your screen, which is currently zoned B2, and takes that into a B3 with Office and Professional Business. This property was acquired and is being converted to a parking lot to serve the office building there, plus the need to bring that into the fold of the B3 zoning once this rezoning is completed. If the council should choose to pass that, then the entirety of that parcel would be appropriately rezoned, I'm sorry, appropriately zoned as B3 Office and Professional Business, again, to include the office building and the adjacent parking. With that in mind, the Plan Commission also reviewed this proposed rezoning at the meeting of May 24th, and they also recommended approval of the proposed rezoning as well. Again, anyone with any questions, comments, please approach the podium, give your name and address, and proceed to address those questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As I mentioned earlier, we have entertained three calls for public commentary. Call number one. Call number two. Kevin, anyone to speak on this item? All right, call number three. All right, turn it over to the council for questions. Steve, anything more on this one?
Oh, nothing. Thank you.
Any other guys? Rich? I guess we'll move on to item number seven and entertain a motion for ordinance 3048.
Kirkowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3048 approving a rezone of the property at 7030 South 13th Street from B2 Community Business and B3 Office and Professional Business to B3 Office and Professional Business.
Clark seconds.
Roll call, please.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item number eight is consider a resolution accepting the 2021 financial statements and auditors' report as prepared and presented by Baker Tilly U S L L P. Max?
All right, thanks, common council. Max Gagan, Assistant City Administrator and Comptroller. So, before you tonight is a resolution accepting the 2021 financial statements as well as auditor report as prepared by Baker Tilly U S L L P. And with us tonight, we do have Wendy Unger, who is our partner for Baker Tilly, and she's going to provide a very brief presentation on the audit results and findings, and there is materials included in your packet that is her presentation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Wendy.
Wendy, name and address, please.
Name and address, Wendy Unger. I am 6913 Roosevelt Road, Hartford, Wisconsin.
Welcome. Good to have you.
All right, well, thank you for having me here. Just a couple things. First, as Max noted, I'm Wendy Unger. I'm a partner with Baker Tilly, have been involved with the city's audit probably the last five years, started when Bridgette was still here, and have continued on. Couple things that I just want to note, as Max also noted, as part of the audit process, we issue two documents, the audited financial statements. We've also issued a reporting and insights document. Both of those are included in your packet of information. Just a couple things I need to note out of each of those, and then I'll open it up to any questions that you may have. Included in the reporting and insights document, we really use that to communicate comments, recommendations, items that may come up as part of the audit. Included in there is a material weakness, that is a material weakness related to that as part of the audit process, we become part of your internal control, internal control structure for a very brief time because we do prepare your audited financial statements. That's not unusual or unexpected for organizations the size of the city, but we do need to put that in writing, include that in the report. Very happy to say, though, as part of the audit process, no material journal entries were noted, a very clean audit process. So, thank Max and his team for all the efforts. Also, one additional item included there, I'm not going to go into detail, Max and I have talked about this in a bit of detail already, there will be a new governmental accounting standard, or GASB, effective for the city for 2022, GASB 87, and the accounting for leases, which will require some probably significant effort on the city's part putting together an inventory of the various leases that exist for the city, both as lessy and as lessor. So, we'll work with management throughout 2022 to make sure that you're ready to implement that as required. The only other item I do want to note is included within your audited financial statements, there's one portion of that that is truly ours, is your auditor's, that's the auditor's opinion. Included in that report is a clean, unmodified opinion, that's the highest level of assurance that you can obtain from us as your auditors. That clean, unmodified opinion means that the financial information contained within the audited statements is believed to be materially accurate. All the disclosures that are required to be included have been included. We follow generally accepted accounting principles, and accounting principles have been consistently applied from year to year again, no new, no new GASBs for 2021. Other than that, included in the summary handout that I have included with your financial information on the very last page is my contact information, my email, my phone number, happy to talk through any of the reports or our audit process with any of you, but at this point, if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Max, you want to add anything, or are you good?
Yeah, I think the only things I'd add is, you know, certainly, audit process went very well this year, even though we're short-staffed and account, so I really want to commend our finance and treasury staff for really delivering a good product at the end of the day. And then, just kind of some highlights of the audit. So, things you'll see is, we did have about a $15 million increase in our governmental fund balance, pretty significant, and what I tried to outline in that memo is that it's more so due to the timing of when revenues were receded versus expenditures occurred. So, we had a refunding that crossed fiscal years, we had a land purchase that crossed fiscal years. So, if we're sitting here a year from now and we show a decrease in that fund balance on our 21, or 22 statements, it's primarily probably due to those items. And then additionally, another item of good news, general fund excellent performance this year, mostly due to proceeds received from the sale of land for Lake Shore Commons. So, you'll see our statements show about net income of about $1.5 million, and that leaves us in a very good position when it comes to reserve. So, our undesignated or unassigned fund balance is at $9.5 million. If you look at that versus what our policy says, which is, we need to keep 15% to 25% of our annual expected revenues or our budgeted revenues in reserve, we're currently exceeding that at 31%. So, what that does is it really puts us in a position that we could look at funding maybe one-time capital projects or other significant, really one-time expenditures with those funds, knowing that something you don't want to create a reoccurring obligation with, again, because of the [inaudible]. But certainly, very good news to report on the [inaudible].
Thanks, man. Questions, comments?
Yeah, this is a quick comment. You know, year after year, we get these good reports on the, on the audit, and it's comforting to hear that. And I know Leslie's not here, but I'm, I'm a big proponent of pushing the good stuff out to the, to the citizens, so this is definitely, I think, Andrew, we've talked to Leslie, something that we can share with the public, because I don't think they, the vast majority of citizens that, you know, may know we have an audit, but they don't know the, the good points, you know, other than, other than we pass, but you know, the stuff that we, that Max said and you said about how well we do. I mean, my wife participates in a yearly audit at her work, and it's quite a painful process because departments don't get the stuff to her in a timely manner, and the auditors are just like chomping at the bit to get this stuff. So, I applaud you guys for making sure that this is, at least to my viewpoint, somewhat painless. Probably isn't for you guys, but it is, you know, to hear this stuff, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Rich, you had something?
Just to say thank you to Max and, and staff for working under probably some adverse conditions in the past year due to staff shortages, so great job for you and staff.
Yeah, Max, my thanks as well. Andrew, running a very tight, good show in the finance department, gives the city a lot of flexibility, a lot of constituents, a lot of credibility in our organization, so we appreciate your help as well. So, that's all we have. Motion for approval, accepting the 2021 financial statements and auditors' report.
Clark moves to approve resolution number 12347-071922, accepting the 2021 financial statements and auditors' report as prepared and presented by Baker Tilly U S L L P. Dukenyak, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item number nine, we understand, well, we understand, will be held until the August 16th meetings will need a motion on that.
Clark moves to hold item number nine.
It is certain. August 16th.
Till August 16th, 2022.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call, please.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Great. Item number 10, then, moving on, is to confirm, the mayor's, motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Matt Trebatowski as the city's Director of Public Works effective July 20, 2022. Andrew?
Yeah, thanks, Ken. As the council is aware, I mean, we, we faced some pretty daunting, a pretty daunting task the last nine months or so with the retirements of many, many of our long-term staff, and it was, again, scary at the beginning, but we've worked our way through that. And one of the more unique ways to handle those vacancies was actually appointing Matt Trebatowski as, as interim and, and filling that gap on a, on a temporary basis, so we thought. Little experimental on, on our end in terms of an arrangement or an agreement like that, having been able to find Matt and Matt be available, but I always like, like it when I already know when experiments are going to work out just fine. So, I had, I had that kind of in the back of my mind when we were looking at that appointment. It was a stabilizing factor in the Department of Public Works. You know, I've, I've been a colleague, professional associate of Matt for many, many years, and we have a luxury right here of, of adding Matt to our management staff full-time. I know there's a very different attitude and change in the air in our Department of Public Works, and I know that if the council so approves this appointment, we will expect and continue to get really, really good things from, from Matt, serving as our, I guess, more permanent Department of Public Works Director. So, I think it was really encouraging to hear the response when we let the DPW staff know that we were planning on bringing this to the, to the common council. You know, there was really nice round of applause for Matt in that, in that room, so that was very reaffirming as well. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure if you want to do a job interview here right now, I'm sure Matt would be ready and prepared for that too, so.
But you got anything? Comments? Rich, yeah?
Alderman, Dukenyak, Third District, and really, not a question, just a comment. I think one of the best indicators that, that I personally enjoy is just the, the lack of input from the constituents in my district about a new appointment. So, that means, Matt, that things are working well with DPW, no complaints whatsoever about services, so congratulations on taking over that department and running it to the point where the citizenship, at least of the Third District, entirely satisfied, and that's not an easy thing to do. So, Matt, congratulations to you.
I, I think I'm happy with when Matt was acting, he, he answered emails, phone calls, he was timely in responses, and like I said before, the temporary curbs that were there for four years got fixed, and you know, what more could I ask for, you know? And he did it within months, so I'm, I'm good.
Good to hear, Greg.
Yeah, I just echo what the others said, and I did have a couple department heads reach out to me prior to this. Give a good word for you, so appreciate the work so far.
I mean, not an easy task stepping into a leadership vacuum, it's a reality. We're both top staff at the department retiring, so we appreciate the fact that you were available and have stepped up to the plate and done a fantastic job, so welcome aboard officially, I guess, right? Anything else, Andrew?
No, I just think, you know, we've, just to really round this out, I mean, we've, we lost a lot of institutional knowledge, but all of those moves, even with, you know, appointing Matt here as, as city engineer and then Matt as DPW, we also hired two other Andrews in the last two months, so we have Matts and Andrews running around this organization quite a bit, but it was Mike when I got here, and now it's, we're filtering out some Mikes, so, no, really just seamless. I think a lot of capacity gained, a lot of new, fresh ideas and new looks, and you know, most importantly, those folks coming into those new roles are, you know, very respected by the folks that they supervise, and that's, that's, you know, that's the, I guess, that's the best performance measurement you can get early on, that the, the folks support the new leaders and that they have in their department. So, I think with, with Matt Trebatowski specifically, you know, we have a lot of conversations moving forward in our strategic plan and organizational alignment and things along those lines, and I think Matt's just going to be a tremendous asset for, for the management team and the common council to, to bring us through those, some, sometimes difficult conversations, so look forward to that, Matt.
Unless tomorrow you are official, right?
We got a motion.
Yeah, we got to take a motion first. Someone got that?
Dukenyak moved to confirm the mayor's appointment of Matt Trebatowski as the city's Director of Public Works effective July 20th, 2022.
Clark seconds.
Thank you. Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Great. Item number 11, then, moving on, consider a resolution approving, sorry, approving, resolution 12342-071922, approving the Flock Group, Inc., memorandum of understanding. Is that you, David, or is someone else kicking that off? All right.
Good evening. You guys ready?
Name and address.
I could. 301 West Ryan Road, Chief of Police.
Hey, is that microphone, Kevin, is that on?
Is it on? It should be on.
Yeah.
Okay. Bringing this forward, automatic license plate readers are nothing new. We're a little bit behind the times in that, and I'm not asking today for us to get any equipment or dive into, nor are we capturing anything. The MOU is basically for us to reach out and search the information that's being captured by others. As a part of this down in the future, those are different policy changes, things to think about, but right now, as an investigative tool, we're looking to get access to what others are gaining. We do have some of that access right now, but every different vendor or whoever the association is, has their own access points. Flock is becoming a leader in Alpers units, not only around the area, but around the nation. This would give us access to not just our local neighbors that have access to it, but anything nationally as well. Part of this is a bigger influx of our neighbors going to these systems and giving us that additional information when we're looking to investigate items, to get that information quicker, instead of us having to reach out, find someone when they have time to get that, we will just have access to it. Probably one of the things that you're asking today is, well, where are we housing this information? We're not. It's not our information. There's no open records information that we need to worry about, there's no additional thing for IT to back up because it's not our information. It's no different than if we go to DOT's website and look up a license plate and then look at it for a minute to get that information. So, they have a lot there, license plate is part of it, but even if we don't have a license plate and we're looking for a specific type of vehicle and that description in that area at a certain time, we can stretch that to get those plates back on those and help with our investigative leads. It's just an additional thing to help us try to solve crimes, to get them solved, but to do it quicker. I know that you probably have questions, and it's probably easier for me to answer some of the questions that you guys have going on, because this part of what's going on, like I said, is nothing new, and intrusiveness, and probably one of the things that you also have concerns about is, well, what about people's privacy and intrusiveness? We're not getting anything else different than as already out in the public. If they're driving around the public, there's nothing that changes that from me driving around, taking pictures, or anyone else here taking pictures or getting that information. So, what we're trying to do is just get better leads quicker. Obviously, vehicles are being used more and more in the commission of crimes, it's nothing new, they've been proven to be used in crime since we had vehicles invented. The bigger thing that we're seeing right now is especially with some of the neighbor jurisdictions that we're getting, especially with vehicle thefts, is that they're stealing from one area, going to the next place, dumping that vehicle and stealing another. This would give us the ability to have some of that information available, that if they do go into certain areas, which we don't have cameras now, but if that's something that we look to in the future, we can actually get virtually immediately notified that these vehicles are coming into our area to stop them from committing more crimes in our city. But this is just a first part of, let's just get access to that information so we can do our job better.
Alderman, Dukenyak, Third District Chief, I mean, obviously, having access to this system without incurring any type of cost is a wonderful tool to add to your enforcement arsenal.
Absolutely.
Do you think at some point, though, again, me not being familiar with this type of system, that it would get to a point where Oak Creek would benefit by having this type of system in their community?
I think something at some point, and that's where I have it, kind of a different phases, and I don't want to get too far into that because that's going to muddy the waters on what we're just dealing with today. I think it gives our citizens not only that ability to get that if they want it, or private businesses to get these units if they want, to help bolster what we're dealing with and to help protect themselves. It, it's going to benefit us as a community moving forward. I absolutely agree with that, but right now, it's the, let's get access to that information so we can see how everything works, and let's get to that next step down the road.
One other question, chief.
Sure.
It was in the report that there's a homeowners' association that has this system in effect, so it can't be terribly expensive?
No, I'm trying to go off of what I'm recalling right now, it's $2,500 to $2,700 a year per unit, and that's an all-inclusive, they set it up, they maintain it, it goes down, they come out, they replace it. So, there are options, and obviously, if homeowners' associations want to take advantage of it, this is something that they could do. So, from our crime prevention standpoint and being able to give them more resources, this is definitely another vein of that to say, here's another option available to you should you choose to use it.
Thank you. I guess a couple questions. I did go back and forth with the homeowners' association, it is in the Second District, and Flock themselves, with installing this, they wanted to put it in the right of way. They ended up putting it in their own private homeowners' association property, but I guess, who owns the information? Can you go to the homeowners' association and ask for that? Are they storing it somewhere, or do they have to go to Flock?
So, their, their agreement with Flock is for Flock to store it, and what they decide to give out for information or not is with their user agreement. So, we only have access to what people are saying, yes, here's the information, go ahead and use it. Completely separate component is the, the right-of-way information, I do recall, because years ago when that came up, I was the first one that got that, worked with Chief Anderson at the time, and there's a right-of-way issue compared to when private entities want to do it and they have it on their private property versus should the city choose to do it and have it on city property in the future.
And now, I couldn't imagine any homeowners' association that has this not sharing the information, but does this MOU give you access directly to Flock so you don't even have to deal with the homeowners' association?
Yes, so we, we only deal with Flock, and whatever their agreements are on the backside is what Flock gets and is able to give out.
And it's my understanding that at least, I know of at least one incident where they were able to recover a robotic lawnmower, I believe they told me, using license plate numbers. Do you know of anything that's been able to have been?
Specific to Flock, I guess, or?
To it being used currently at the one homeowners' association, do you know?
That, that I couldn't say for certain on.
Okay, thanks.
I, I do know of our local agencies around here that have had very recent things that have happened, and the benefits that they've seen with this, they've gone ahead and done more with it than what they've already initially done. So, like I said, this is kind of that first step, let's get in, let's get access to that information, and let's see what we can do from there.
Thanks.
Greg and Rich asked the questions.
Okay, cool. David, I had a couple.
Sure.
Questions slash thoughts. I know some of this may be sensitive in the police.
Um, I know some of this may be sensitive in the policing in the community. You can tell us what you can and what you. What types of, do we currently have technology in-house or are we accessing technology in-house similar to this for crime solving capabilities?
We have an association we've been involved with for a number of years where we get access to that information. Those are only the selected governmental agencies that are in it, and it's not even all of them around here. So we don't get any private entities that come in with that. Um, we here, as you know, don't have any reader units the way it is, so we're not giving any of that additional information or partaking and putting information into the system. We're just searching it to get information out to try to solve things. So there's definitely a benefit that we're getting out right now with what we have. This will help bolster that even more because we're going to get more coverage on it. Um, another component like what was already asked would be to, in the future, hopefully add our own information or be able to have readers that if we put in, uh, what are called hot lists, we can get immediately notified if one of these vehicles passes one of those locations and we can get officers to that location immediately.
That, that touches on something that concerns me a little bit with the kind of the insidiousness of some of this. But I'm not sure the legal, you, you did write up in your, in your manager's report on the legal aspect of this. Cars infecting the public sphere, I suppose.
Correct.
In terms of what rights you give up actually by operating a vehicle. So there, there's state settled case law that concerns the rights you have given up by operating a vehicle and what other vendors can capture and freely distribute and sell, just like the CDC was buying cellphone data.
So right now, right, the DMV, so we don't get DMV information back on this. It's just a plate that matches that where that, is that we have to do more research and get those DMV records to see who that person is to try to then follow the leads. They're only investigative nuggets at that point, if you will. We still have work that we have to do. It just puts somebody in a place at a certain time that we're looking for that we already have an interest in that person. When we look at information that's being captured or held, we're not keeping it. It's not the city of Oak Creek, we don't have to worry about them coming back on retention items because we're not retaining it, we're just searching to see what's there. Uh, the matter of fact on this is when you fill out your registration stuff with the DMV, you sign your name on your license or your registration, the DMV, the state sells that to everybody and they already have more information than anything that we're going to capture back on it.
The, um. In concept, in concept, is Flock is essentially a commercial ring doorbell.
I, I guess if you want to look at that way, yes, just, just like you have, you know, numerous home security things, whether that's ADT, Ring, Nest, all those different communities, and they're all things that, you know, same thing we would do right now. Here's some things that you can do to protect yourself at your house. We're not telling you that to go with this one item or not, but here's some things that you can do to protect yourself. Flock is one of the only big name manufacturers or companies out there that is doing this right now for everyone. They're not just saying, we're just only going, doing it for the public, we're not just doing it for government, we're out here to try and bring both of them together because they realize that the work between the citizens and government is where we're going to be able to get those connections and make those investigatory connections at as well.
Uh, yeah, I, like I said, I do worry a little bit about the. Well, you should worry a lot about the privacy aspect. Primary right we have. Um, it's just like, you know, what you give up when you own a cellphone, you keep it in your pocket, what you, people can gather from where you walk around, drive around. You give up a lot of liberty by.
Your GPS is constantly on, if you go to Google Maps, it'll show everywhere you went to.
Um, but, you know, I did notice in the, in the council report, there is an incrementalism to this. I'm sure written in the back of that, that there's multiple steps to take and this becomes endemic in your, that's a whole different discussion, so.
So, so the other, the other phases of that are two completely different things in the future, but it's the, at least give you a understanding that there's more thought into this than just, let's just get an MOU out there, let's get access to this. There is more that can be done. Uh, one of that second component like is in there for phase two would be, once we have access to this, it would behoove our people that have interest in this to also, here's another option. You want to do ring doorbell, you want to do Nest, you want to, as a homeowners association or a private business, do Flock, know that we now have access to that. And if something does happen here or you have concerns about it, we can go look into that. We don't have the time nor the personnel nor the, uh, efforts right now to just go and look at things. We're not looking at anything unless it's actually something that really needs to be looked into because somebody called and has a concern about it.
Appreciate that, you know, the, the hard thing to consider in all this is the laws, you know, unintended consequences.
Absolutely.
So.
And, and I think with that, Alderman, it's, this is a technology that's been out there for a while, and we're talking fifteen, twenty years now. Um, I know there's been concerns here at council and through the city about that, and I think that's why we're one of the ones that's behind on this, and I'm trying to get us back up with the times. I think the biggest thing that can, has been concerns, and I think you even brought it up, is we're all carrying technical devices on us now that have cameras, everyone's posting where they are. Us finding where you are, seeing where you were at a point because you passed the camera, has less consequences than when you upload a photo with all your geo data information, put it on social media and show everyone what you're doing and where you're at.
Anything else you guys? Have anything to add, Melissa? Nothing you want to add? Andrew, anything? Um, thank you, David. Any other discussion, guys? We will entertain a motion on item number eleven.
Clark moves to approve resolution number one, two, three, four, two, dash zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, a resolution approving the Flock Group Inc. memorandum of understanding.
Dukniak second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Dukniak.
Hi.
Uh, we are going to hold item number twelve, so it was a housekeeping item, we're going to hold until the council meeting of August sixteenth.
Clark moves to hold item number twelve until the common council meeting of August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Dukniak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Dukniak.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi. Great, thank you. Moving on to engineering, item number thirteen is, uh, consider resolution one, two, three, four, three, dash zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, in support of the addition of city sidewalks on Milwaukee County's proposed South Thirteenth Street reconstruction project. Matt, hey, welcome back.
Evening, council. Um, yes, in front of you, you have a resolution in support of the addition of sidewalks, um, along South Thirteenth Street. Um, the project is scheduled to be constructed in twenty twenty-four, um, it's under design currently. Typically, we do request that sidewalks be included, um, in certain areas, and this being one in front of West Middle School and connecting Draxel and other subdivisions, it seemed prudent, um, to request this. They've included it, it's, um, no funding requirements from the city.
One side or both sides?
Both sides.
Really?
Yes. Um, no financial, uh, commitments. This is nothing more than, um, basically supporting the fact that they're going to be put in and that we will, uh, maintain them through our municipal code.
School district responsible for the frontage?
Uh, yeah, everything within the municipal code, so yes, you are required and, you know, anything that's in your frontage, you're required to clean, maintain.
Alderman Dukniak, third district, um, I know that there's going to be some work on the safe routes to school program in the area of West Middle School, so county is aware of that, right? And it will configure those sidewalks in front of West, probably on both sides accordingly.
Correct, we're actually working concurrently with them, um, through our design and theirs. Um, so we are kind of, both of them are funded through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation funding, so we have actually been able to, um, move that portion of our project back to work with theirs in twenty twenty-four. So it'll be installed with the project, but it'll just be funded through us, the, for the hog signal.
Action, Dave? Steve, Greg?
Hey.
County's gonna fix, uh, Thirteenth, we asked for sidewalks and they're not charging us?
Yeah.
End of day.
That's a good thing.
Great.
Um, I guess real quick, one more thing, I, I mean, this is a long time coming, I don't think I've ever spoken to a parent that has a kid at West Middle School that did not want sidewalks there. Um, I believe I heard something also though, when they reconstruct the road, that they were considering reducing the speed limit for that section. You know that's going to happen?
That is correct, there's, I, I believe it's going to be reduced to thirty-five.
Okay.
Um, we requested that to be looked at, um, and to be consistent from basically all the way, um, from college south, where it's thirty-five now, so, um, my understanding. To Puget Road. So to be within that project limits, um, as, as they continue to work south, we'll continue to request those changes.
Thank you.
Motion.
Clark moves to approve resolution number one, two, three, four, three, dash zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, in support of the addition of city sidewalks on Milwaukee County's proposed South Thirteenth Street reconstruction project.
Dukniak second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Hi.
Dukniak.
Hi.
Gail. Kirkowski.
Hi.
Item fourteen, uh, consider a resolution one, two, three, four, four, dash zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, adopting sewer packs, planning number, report number three, three, zero, a restoration plan for the Oak Creek watershed. He's got the joy of that.
That'll be me again, so in front of you, also is another resolution for, uh, support and resolution in adopting the sewer pack planning report. Um, this is a three-volume report, it's each volume is roughly one and a half to two inches thick, um, so it's pretty significant. Um, we lie within sixty-four percent of, of that watershed is in the city of Oak Creek. Um, it does cover water quality, um, some stream restoration plans, so there's a number of plans and identified projects that they're, they're looking at. Um, what this would do is by, um, putting our support and adopting this, it does prove, or provide us a little bit more, um, I guess, support in when we go for funding on projects that we want to identify to do. Um, some of those might be stream restoration through Abinshine Park. I know we're kind of working with DPW on that currently. So there's projects of that nature, uh, some water quality projects like along Draxel would be any kind of ditches or, or retention ponds or bio-retention swales, things of those natures. Um, also, um, it allows us to maybe transfer some funding through sewer pack and MMSD, so there's a number of options here by, uh, just adopting and supporting it.
Questions to Matt? I did have one, Matt. Do you happen to know, is there any private property holders in, that would be impacted that don't necessarily know they're going to?
I think when you want to identify a project, you know, we'd have to go through the same process that we do. So if there's any private, I mean, obviously we'd be working with those, um, property owners at that point in time if we did identify a project that we wanted to do. Um, it's nothing.
Even though we adopt this plan, it's, the stuff inside of it's optional?
Yes, it, it, these are identified projects that would, you know, improve our water quality and everything through that watershed, it's not required projects. But this just identifies a number of them that they're looking to do.
But this entity is required to do this kind of thing.
Sewer pack is, yes, yes.
Anything else? Take a motion on that, unless someone else got anything else to add?
Lorik moves to adopt resolution number one, two, three, four, four, dash zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, a resolution adopting sewer pack, planning report number three, three, zero, a restoration plan for the Oak Creek watershed.
Dukniak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Item fifteen is to consider resolution one, two, three, three, five, dash zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, accepting a temporary cul-de-sac easement at three oh one West Ryan Road.
Yes, I also have this one, um, this is actually, um, a temporary easement for Broadacre Development, the four apartments that are being built, um, just directly west of the police department. Um, this temporary cul-de-sac actually goes on city property, um, that's why we're requesting it. If the property to the south of, um, Broadacre ever decided to develop, at that point, we would vacate that temporary easement and it would be required to extend the Eagle Summit to the property. So this is nothing more because it is owned by, it's not public right away, it's just to get that temporary easement, the place, the cul-de-sac.
That'll be restored if.
Yes. Well, no, the temporary, the cul-de-sac's going to remain until anything ever went to the south.
But that, that's county property.
To the south, so it's probably highly unlikely would ever occur, I think at this point it was more, um, I guess this was probably the best avenue for us to go forward, to be able to get the project moving forward. We ever chose or came to a point we want to make that more permanent right away, we can do that, so.
Anything else, guys? Can we make a motion? Okay, great, we'll take a motion and then.
Oh, you won't?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Um, Dukniak move to approve resolution number one, two, three, three, five, dash zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, accepting a temporary cul-de-sac easement at three oh one West Ryan.
Clark seconds.
A roll call, please.
Alderman, Gail.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Dukniak.
Hi.
Item number sixteen then is consider resolution one, two, three, four, six, dash zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, approving the Stone Brook on the park development agreement with Janson Brookner LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at seventy-nine forty-three, seventy-nine twelve, seventy-nine forty-two, eighty thirty-four and eighty thirty-one South Quincy Avenue.
Good evening, we got, uh, engineering has this one again, um, this is our standard development agreement language. Um, our assistant city engineer worked with legal counsel, um, and the developer and came up with the agreement here. Um, pretty straightforward, there are a few items in here that might be of, um, and, you know, interest as far as the sequencing, um, on page three and four of the agreement. Um, they have a north section and a south section that we're kind of identifying through the project, but we would be willing and, um, it'd give them some milestones on issuing of building permits and public improvements that would be required prior to us issuing those. Um, other than that, you have your sidewalks, your street lighting, roadway connections, water, sewer, all that will be required along with detention ponds. Any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them for you.
Yeah, Alderman Dukniak, third district, Matt, uh, I, early on, there were some concerns from area residents about the flood plains and the impact that this development would have on flooding that, I guess, takes place in the area. And Steve, do you recall there were supposed to be public discussions about that? Were those ever held? I know it was not, uh, going to include residents at the north end of that proposed development, but then went as far south as, is that Forest Hill? And that had concerns about, about flooding.
I.
I don't believe we were required to have any kind of public information on it.
Okay.
Just, just as standard practice with our stormwater management requirement under chapter thirteen, we are more stringent than any other municipality in the southeast region and actually MMSD or sewer pack. So in regards to potential flooding, we actually probably improve the situation that's out there for our developments.
Okay.
Um, some people don't believe that, but, I mean, that's, that's just, you know, our, our standard practice and, and we've seen that, those changes when we've developed areas.
Okay, thank you.
This is the, this is the development, Alderman Kirkowski, first district, this is the, a development that is adjacent to Abinshine Park, correct?
That is correct.
So the, Rich, the one that we were discussing was the one that was on Forest Hill, just north of that, and it had encompassed potential flooding issues on both first district and third district.
Right.
But we, I haven't heard anything about that development lately, but, uh, yeah, this is.
Well, that, and that's not part of this?
No, no, this is, this is a separate development and developer.
I apologize.
There were, there were a couple of residents that.
Okay.
That were concerned about flooding, but not to the extent of the development on Forest Hill. And, and since then I have heard no other, I've received no other complaints or emails or anything about, or concerns about this development, uh.
And I apologize, I, I was, I guess of the understanding that the south end of this development was the one that residents had concern about. If that's not the case, yeah, I'm okay.
I don't have anything further, thank you.
Cool. Uh, then we'll take a motion on item number sixteen.
Kowski make a motion to adopt resolution number one, two, three, four, six, dash zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, approving the Stone Brook on the park development agreement with Janson Brookner LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at seventy-nine forty-three, seventy-nine twelve, seventy-nine forty-two, eight zero three four and eight zero three one South Quincy Avenue.
Clark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Dukniak.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi. Great, now, item number seventeen, and it's consider resolution one, two, three, four, eight, dash zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, approving the. Great. Item number seventeen, and it's consider resolution one, two, three, four, eight, dash, zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, approving the tsunami car wash development agreement with tsunami car wash intermediate hold co LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at one forty, West Pewt's Road.
Yes, this is a resolution for the development agreement for the tsunami car wash. Interesting point on this development agreement, it only really covers water main extension. So it's very limited in its depth, but they are required to extend the water main through an actual easement that's already there to make it public. So it's very short, sweet, and there's not much to it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Me. Is it good?
It's in here.
Take a motion on seventeen.
Lark moves to adopt resolution number one, two, three, four, eight, dash, zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, approving the tsunami car wash development agreement with tsunami car wash intermediate hold CO LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at one four zero West Pewt's Road.
Dukenia second.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Lark.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Great. Moving on, item number eighteen, consider resolution one, two, three, four, nine, dash, zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, approving a state municipal agreement for a state-led local bridge project replacement of a bridge located at South Sixth Street Bridge over Branch of Creek.
Yes, this is a resolution for the state municipal agreement. The city was awarded a significant amount of money, a little over million dollar on a project for a bridge replacement. The bridge is located up by Ascension on Sixth Street. It's a box culvert. If anybody has been up there next to railroad just north of Little League Complex. This bridge has actually gone under the load rating, so it's a need to repair. We applied for it. We were awarded that money. I mean, it's an eighty twenty, so eighty percent is paid through federal funding and twenty percent would be the city share, and that is for design and construction. What is for both? Is there any questions? Happy to answer.
At the, you said that the bridge is north of the Little League Complex?
Yes, it is north.
Okay.
The, the bridge that's located just at Little League, we are actually applying for funding to do rehabilitation on the deck.
Thank you.
I'd have to really review that, but I believe it was twenty twenty-three for design and twenty twenty-four construction.
Is that a?
We'd probably be looking to close the entire road to speed it up, but we'll, I mean, those, those details will be worked through during the construction or during the design, I mean.
You got that?
Pardon? Oh, okay. Kerkowski make a motion to adopt resolution number one, two, three, four, nine, dash, zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, approving a state municipal agreement for a state-led local bridge project, the replacement of a bridge located on South Sixth Street Bridge over Branch of.
Lark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenia.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lark.
Aye.
Great. Moving on, nineteen is information technology motion request change orders to the east side fiber network expansion unit price contract to add connections at Aben Shine Park, south side of Lake Vista Park, and to replace damaged fiber near the civic center, a total estimated cost of eighty-one thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars, twenty-two cents.
Good evening, everyone. Kevin Koenig, IT manager. So this request is addressed to use some additional capacity that the east side fiber project has to add additional connections at Aben Shine as well as down towards the south side of Lake Vista. We currently have a camera on the south side of Lake Vista that's connected wirelessly back to the pavilion, so that one, once the houses are built as part of Lake Shore Commons, we won't have wireless connection anymore, so we're planning on doing the fiber there. At Aben Shine, it's the future pavilion to allow public internet as well as telephone and other services at the new pavilion, and then the escape park as well. The replacement is a run from Sixth and Drexel to this building, which was damaged earlier this spring. Locate crew accidentally cut some cable, so we're having that all replaced because we don't have a service loop anymore. So let's make it so if it gets hit, that we don't have an issue again.
And to soak up the whole balance of water utility?
So, so this was talked about, the initial east side fiber project, it was always the plan that we were going to split the cost with the water utility. And then eventually possibly partner with the school district because we are building capacity in it to have the school district also have it. So utilizing these funds, it is needed at those other areas, and it was always agreed upon the initial terms with water utility that they would potentially pay for a portion of it.
And the school district has not contributed?
Not, not yet.
All right. Any other discussion, you guys? Then we'll take a motion on item number nineteen.
Lark moves to request change orders to the east side fiber network expansion unit price contract to add connections at Aben Shine Park, south side of Lake Vista Park, and to replace the damaged fiber near the civic center at the total estimated cost of eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents.
Dukenia second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lark.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kev.
Moving on, license committee, item number twenty then is consider a motion to prove the various license requests as listed in the license report. Alderman Kerkowski.
Thank you, Ken. Trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the items on the common council report for tonight. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or? All right, seeing none, Kerkowski make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two license committee report.
Ex second.
Great. Thank you. Roll call.
Aye.
Lark.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item twenty-one, we get to spend some money. Vendor summary reports, various time periods. First one, item number twenty-one is for the June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two vendor summary report in the amount of three hundred twenty thousand, fourteen dollars, thirty-two cents. Max, anything else, anything they add on those? Anything stand out? Any questions, you guys? Take a motion on that then.
Lark moves to approve the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two vendor summary report in the total of three hundred and twenty thousand, fourteen dollars and thirty-two cents.
Ex second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lark.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Great. Item twenty-two is then to consider the vendor sum report for July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of six hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred twenty dollars, fifty-four cents. Questions, concerns, comments? Take a motion.
Lark moves to approve the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two vendor summary report in the total amount of six hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-four cents.
Ex second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenia.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lark.
Aye.
Great. Item twenty-three then is consider resolution one, two, three, four, one, dash, zero, seven, one, nine, two, authorizing payments of bills, debts, and obligations since we won't be meeting for the regular August due date, national night out. So just need a motion on that.
Lark moves to adopt resolution number one, two, three, four, one, dash, zero, seven, one, nine, two, two, a resolution authorizing payment of bills, debts, and obligations.
Ex second.
Um, roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lark.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Steve, if you could follow up with a motion here on the closed session item. Oh, because I have to announce it.
Okay.
Hang on, one second. Oh, okay, yeah, there is item C, actually. We're gonna move out of the closed session agenda. That is under number twenty-four. Item C is through section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E to consider whether or not to pursue an agreement for the securitization of opioid distributor settlement funds on our legal counsel's advice at the open item discussion.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Council. Hope that's all right. I think that just given the public interest in this matter, I don't think that there's anything that really was required or begged to be discussed in closed session. I think that certainly it's in the public interest as well. So hopefully that's all right. But at the end of the day, there are decisions that this council has made that puts us in the situation that we are, and essentially, the decision point now is whether or not to pursue an agreement or the proposed settlement, the actual settlement for the securitization of certain opioid distributor settlement funds. So what does that mean? I mean, by way of background, and part of this is for the public, I know that the council has made these decisions, but there have been considerable discussions by this council regarding the lawsuits that were pending nationally that were brought against the various manufacturers and distributors of opioids. So the big three pharmaceutical distributors were McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen, and the manufacturer was Janson Pharmaceuticals, Inc. Parent company is Johnson and Johnson. So we talked about this back in twenty nineteen about the possibility of joining in as a local municipality with other Milwaukee County municipalities as plaintiffs in filing a class action lawsuit against these entities. And those claims result from the marketing and distribution of opiates in the city of Oak Creek and to the city of Oak Creek. So as a result of that, in the council's decision, we were one of only eight Milwaukee County municipalities to join in this litigation. We brought back before you and the council approved a proposed settlement by way of the Wisconsin Local Government MOU and the Wisconsin State Local Government MOU. There were those two documents towards the end of the year that we needed to enter into and have approved. Then this year, in February twenty twenty-two, the Wisconsin Department of Justice announced a final approval of a settlement agreement in the multi-district litigation, that's case number MDL twenty-eight oh four, for the national prescription opioid cases that were consolidated. So that's a litigation that involved these distributors and Johnson and Johnson. The question here tonight is whether or not the council would want to direct the possibility of these payments that are supposed to begin in twenty twenty-two and then will continue from the distributors over a period of sixteen years. If you wanted to consider whether or not we would essentially sell that revenue stream for certain consideration and then receive a larger, potentially upfront payment. There's an attachment to your council report that's just an example that shows essentially, at the end of the day, as an example, like I said, if we did nothing, we would receive what's extrapolated to be over two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars over eighteen payments, which would conclude in twenty thirty-eight. Great. That is part of our settlement payment or from the distributors. So the question is, in order to have a crystal ball and know that there isn't going to be some sort of reorganization corporate-wise or bankruptcy filing or some sort of reorganization, we could enter into, potentially with other municipalities, the securitization of the settlement, and this example is that we could get a lump sum of almost a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in that first year. So these are preliminary discussions. This is nothing that I would recommend or ask you to sign on to. The question is regarding the Wisconsin Counties Association, a local financial firm, PMA Financial Network, Citigroup Global Markets Representatives, and legal counsel as well in Milwaukee have been reviewing and evaluating this settlement plan. And the focus is on this longer payment term with the distributors, because the manufacturer payments are only over nine years. So the question is, what is in the public's best interest to try to ensure that we get what we are entitled to? I guess is the best way of saying it. And we don't know that answer, but at the end of the day, certainly the option tonight before you that we're presenting as staff is to say, do you want us to continue to explore a possible pursuing of this option without it being binding? So I know I've been talking for a bit, but I will stop there and I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Melissa, my, Alderman Kerkowski, my opinion is that we go after the lump sum, take the money now, because I divvy it up over sixteen years, a little less than fourteen thousand dollars, could do something with, but I think you could do a lot more with a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars or whatever that was, right away. That's my opinion. And like you say, I mean, in ten, twelve years, something may happen and then there's no more money left holding, you know, whatever. My thoughts.
Do you want to, you guys have a feel for what they're using for?
Yeah, I can speak a little bit more to it. So I did just kind of a cursory review of what PMA now financially put together. So essentially, if we do the securitization round, essentially, we'd get about eighty-five percent what would be owed to us, but we would get that upfront. So, you know, when I think the common council needs to evaluate this decision, I think really looking at, you know, is there, you know, working with the health department, is there a need? So there are restricted uses. This would go into a special revenue fund. And then health department programming would have to fall within the parameters for the settlement and apply funds. So really working with the health department figuring out if there's immediate need, you know, make it an immediate impact right away, then, yeah, it may make sense to securitize. You know, I think the other part of it too is, Melissa alluded to, is trying to hedge our risk. So if we try and get funds upfront, who's not to say one or a couple of these companies declare bankruptcy in year three or four and then try and discharge? Maybe Melissa could speak to that more, but I, I believe this would probably be a discharge debt bankruptcy court. The likelihood of that, given these are multinational firms? Probably not, but again, if you're trying to minimize that risk and essentially shift it from the city holding it to more of that investor, but you know, to be honest, there's really smart people who are gonna securitize this, so they're gonna make sure that they're gonna take as much risk off of it as possible, and that's kind of why you see, you know, we would only be getting that's the.
It's a little too convoluted with peers.
Yeah, it would be really challenging. You know, the other thing we would have to probably work with, maybe our municipal advisor, maybe auditors, is how would that securitization process look like on our books? Would it actually look like debt? Is essentially upfront for something should be received all the time. So, you know, would that affect our debt limit, given it's such a small dollar amount? Rather materials. So again, I think that's that weighing, you know, we have immediate needs in the short term versus minimizing our risk, or do we want to try and build in a long-term program and see if there's a way you can sustain staff, a portion, portion of a staff person over a longer period of time? I think it's probably more appropriate for the health department to speak to immediate needs versus.
Our item is just to authorize you to continue.
Correct. I mean, that's up to the council. This wasn't something that we would make, certainly at a staff decision. There's been a lot of discussion statewide, county level, local levels. I can, you know, just advise the council if you would like to know, and I refer with Max, I think that this is, there's a lot more to glean here and dig in on, but the allowable use of settlement payments is in a couple of categories. One is treatment. So treating opioid use disorders, supporting people in treatment and recovery, making connections to care, addressing the needs of criminal justice-involved persons, addressing the needs of pregnant parenting women, their families, and.
Be fun our new interview.
We, I think we would have to look at it more, but, you know, I guess my inkling at this time is why securitization is actually being offered is, you know, some of your larger counties or municipalities are getting some substantial amount of dollars, and Oak Creek's pretty fortunate in our growth and our positive network construction, that we don't have as many budgetary constraints as others. I can see this being maybe attractive for Milwaukee or Milwaukee County or other places around the country. because they can potentially offset some of those generally funded health department expenses with this funding.
Anything else, you guys? So we actually just need a motion on item C then. Staff and legal to pursue securitization of the. We can do that now.
Kerkowski will make a motion to.
Pardon?
Staff.
Direct staff to pursue an agreement with the securitization of opioid distributor settlement funds.
Clark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Great. Now, we're moving into closed session to consider a motion, consider a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eight-five, discuss the following, A, section nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub G, to consider a proposed settlement of the city's claim filed against the estate of Thomas W. Young, B, section nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub G, to consider class action proposed settlement in the city of Long Beach at all versus Monsanto Company at all. Steve?
Kerkowski make a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eight-five, to discuss the following. A, section nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub G, to consider a proposed settlement of the city's claim, city's claim filed against the estate of Thomas W. Young, B, section nineteen eighty-five, nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub G, to consider the class action proposed settlement in the city of Long Beach at all versus Monsanto Company at all.
Clark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Great. Well, in closed session, we'll reconvene after discussions of item.
Kerkowski make a motion to reconvene into open session.
Clark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Great. Item number twenty-four then will enter T motion on item number A.
On twenty-four.
Or, excuse me, sorry, that is twenty-six. We'll take action on that.
Oh. Dukenyak move to accept the offer to settle the city's claim against the estate of Thomas W. Junk, Mawakasha County, case number two oh one eight PR four five seven, authorize the city attorney to execute the necessary documents, including a stipulation and order as to disclaimer of interest in real estate asset, stipulation and order as to payment and release of claims and interests.
Clark will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
And also then, action on item B.
Kerkowski will make a motion to direct the staff to opt out of the class action proposed settlement in city of Long Beach at all versus Monsanto Company at all.
Clark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Great, thank you. As well can be expected, take a motion, entertain a motion for, pulls an upshot.
Lorik moves to adjourn.
Dukenyak second.
Great. Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.